To call the January 28th City Council meeting to order and welcome everyone who's sitting in our audience, welcome to all the people who are watching online and will be watching the replays of this. Tonight, I wanted to start off with a couple of points, important points, because Maplewood is making the newspaper and, you know, that's always kind of an interesting thing for our city, but we've been the, one of the lead stories twice now in the month of January, and I wanted to comment about those. The first article was the January 27th article concerning the Sandy Lake issue that we are working through with our city. That was the headline for the Sunday paper. For those of you out there, we have an issue with Sandy Lake in that we have some divergent interests with Sandy Lake. Sandy Lake is where the St. Paul Regional Water Facility is, and it happens to be smack dab abutting our community. And so while, on the one hand, the interest is that we all need clean water, and that's what they provide, on the other hand, it has currently been creating some difficulties in our community. And I know that staff has, have been working on this for some time, and I want to give the assurances to the Sandy Lake neighborhood over there that the issues that you had last summer will not continue again for another summer. There will be a meeting that will be coming up, I think sometime in February. City Manager Coleman, do you have a date on that yet?
Actually, the date has been moved to probably March 5th or March 7th. The other date was March 11th, and we'll be here on March 11th, so it'll be March 5th or 7th likely.
Okay, so there'll be a meeting between the St. Paul Regional Water folks, our city folks, and also our neighborhood in terms of what can be done to address some of the issues that just simply made that unacceptable last summer for noise and dust and basic living conditions over there. And so we're working really hard on that, and I was glad that the St. Paul paper wrote about it, and I want to assure you that we are working through it. It will take some time. And I certainly want to acknowledge our community because sometimes it takes longer than you want, I know, as council members. Some, that is a real frustration. We're just, we're citizens of the community as well, and being elected officials, one thing I can tell you is that things do tend to take longer than we want them to, but what we're really out looking for is the right result, and we certainly are going to address that and take care of that issue. So that was the headline on January 27th. The other headline that we had this January was an article on January 17th concerning Borchards, which is a lovely little grocery store over on Frost Avenue in our Frost English Development area. And the Borchards, Dave and Donna opened, well, they bought the old Richards. I remember Richards stopping there when my kids were going to Weaver Elementary and picking up groceries or something to eat for dinner. But they had several problems when they opened up their grocery store, including downed power lines that led to a boiler room fire, thieves who damaged their freezers and refrigerator, and then there was a Christmas time theft of the, the red kettle that they had in their store. And so the damages were up there around $80,000. And the newspaper interviewed the Borchards, and there was a concern that maybe they were thinking that they would have to close because it was just, you know, financially such a burden for them. And I stopped in at Borchards and talked with them, and I'm happy to say, this is kind of a follow-up on that Pioneer Press article, in that our community is really rallying around the Borchards. And some of the things that have been happening is that the Maplewood Mall has reached out to the Borchards, they have a GoFundMe page that you can, that our community is supporting them in trying to make sure that that small business continues in our community, because they really do provide a great service to that neighborhood. Maplewood Toyota also reached out to them. Many Maplewood residents have been specifically stopping in there and shopping at that wonderful little grocery store. And I do know that North High School has offered their DECA program to help them with a new marketing plan to really make sure that they succeed in our community, and so the Borchards are thrilled, and they really are feeling the love in our community. And I think that that's a great follow-up to, you know, a wonderful family that bought into a grocery store in our community and how our community is rallying around them. So that's kind of a nice follow-up in terms of that article. And the Borchards are going to be continuing on in Maplewood because they really do appreciate our community, and I think that really shows the people that live here and the other businesses that we have here in Maplewood and how we support each other. So that is the welcome for tonight, and, you know, I look around, and Mayor Slawick always had a child who would come up, and there is no child. So I guess I'm going to have to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, so would you join me?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. And City Clerk Sint, would you please do the roll call for us?
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Juneman?
Here.
Mayor Abrams?
Here.
And as a note, the other two council seats are vacant.
Thank you very much for that. Not for long. We'll talk about that in a little bit. Let's move on to the approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Smith, seconded by Councilmember Juneman. Is there any other discussions? Councilmember Juneman?
I have a couple of council presentations. This will be the last call for recycle your holidays. And then I'd like to point out the Metro Livable Communities Grant that came to Maplewood.
Okay, anyone else?
I'd like to put in a thank you to Public Works.
And I will add the North End Study to council presentations. Okay, anything else? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All approved. Let's move on to the minutes.
I move approval of the City Council Workshop Minutes from January 14th.
Second.
Councilmember Juneman has moved approval of the City Council Workshop Minutes, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Any other discussion on that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we move on to City Council Minutes.
I move approval of the City Council Meeting Minutes from January 14th.
Second.
Moved by Smith, seconded by Councilmember Juneman. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Moving on to appointments and presentations. The first agenda item is the administrative presentations, council member, or council calendar update.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams. Members of the City Council, the calendar is just an opportunity for me to give you a snapshot of the upcoming meetings and what we anticipate the business will be. On February 11th will be our City Council candidate interviews, and Mayor Abrams has asked me to remind our community and residents who may be watching about our process that we have set out. And right now, we are accepting applications for the council positions. There are two of them. They're two-year terms until the election in 2020. We are taking applications until this Wednesday, the 30th, at end of Business Day. After we get the applications, we will verify that the applicants are eligible to take the office of council in the City of Maplewood. We will then put the application packet together and send those to council on Friday, February 1st, in a packet that will have a spreadsheet, and each council member individually will rank the applicants. And a result of their individual rankings, and staff will take those back, we want those back by Tuesday, February 5th, so that we can tally the results. And the top four candidates will be invited in to interview for the position on February 11th at our workshop, and will be sworn in that evening on February 11th. So that's the process that we have for that.
Thank you.
So if you are interested in serving, please, time is, is ticking. We've got two, you've got two days to do that. On February 25th...
Point of information.
Oh, sure.
Thank you. I'm sorry to interrupt, but I just want to make sure it's very, very clear, because the, the newspaper did get this part wrong.
Right.
That staff will not be vetting any of these applications, except for making sure that they're meeting the statutory requirements of the job. Beyond that, it is the council that will be doing any vetting going forward. So I just want to make sure that's crystal clear, because I've had several people reach out to me with concerns about that, and they were valid concerns, and that was, that was a misprint in the newspaper.
Thank you for getting that clarification.
Absolutely. That's very good. Thank you. On February 25th, we are going to have a presentation from Excel on the gas main replacement project that will be happening in Maplewood this summer, and we have commissioner opening interviews as well. On March 11th, we're going to have an update on the Nature Center Strategic Plan, and also, I will be giving a presentation to the council, particularly geared at our new members, but it's a refresher for our existing council members too, on how we conduct city business and public meetings. And that covers kind of a little tutorial on the city manager form of government and open meeting law violations and other things that you need to be concerned about as a council member. Then on March 25th, we'll be doing the Public Safety Strategic Plan. In addition to that, we do have a running list of things that we're thinking about working, bringing forward, or that we're working on. Tobacco 21, we're waiting till we get a full council to bring that group back in. We talked about the Tree Program this evening. We do have some meetings, the mayor and I have some meetings with the superintendents, and so we will report back on that, and then maybe later in the year, have the superintendents back for an update on where they're at. The sign removal on vacant buildings has been in the design review board process, and they should be making a recommendation to us shortly. And then we have some follow-up activities, which are really requests by the council to follow up on some new ordinances that we've incorporated at the end of last year, which is related to on-street parking enforcement and how that's going, and also our new excess calls for service ordinance to let the council know mid-year how that has been working out. In addition, tonight, we got added to our year-end report, the Urban Roots Program, which was given the green light earlier this evening, which is a partnership with the city to have a seed garden, native plants. So that'll be interesting, and then we will also update the council on the Moore Group, which is the Maplewood Organization for Racial Equity, and some of the initiatives that we are undertaking this year. So with that, now is the time for council to bring forward anything they might have that they're hoping we can do some research on or report back on.
Does anyone have anything to add on tonight?
Oh, you did.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I have had a conversation with City Manager Coleman about pet licensing. There is a trend among cities of just doing away with pet licensing, and after reading that article in the paper about this, and then spending about an hour and a half getting my three dogs licensed, those two things together, I thought, you know, maybe this is something we should just take a look at and make sure that we're not doing this for the sake of doing it and that there is real value to the city. So I'd just like to look into it, see what the revenue impacts are, what the policy impacts might be, and to see if that's maybe an efficiency we could drive without unintended consequences.
City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Smith, and the, I think it was two weeks ago or so, Ms. Sint did a report about the costs of the licensing and what the lost revenue might be and why we do it. And, and the end of that, I asked for council to, if they had any directives they would like to have after that, getting that information, that we should talk about it more, but that was presented, Andrea did a report a couple, maybe two or three weeks ago, is in the FYI.
Oh, but we haven't actually talked about it.
No.
So...
Because I, you know, that's the kind of thing that unless everybody's on board...
That's the sort of stuff I don't think we should do in the FYI. I think that that's a, that's a discussion we need to have.
It didn't make the list, that's why it went in the FYI.
And that's why I'm putting it on the list.
But we can put it on the list, that's exactly what this is for, so we're...
We'll put it on the list.
We agree.
Yeah.
Okay. So you'd like that to be a council item for discussion? Is that what I'm hearing?
I'm fine with putting it on there and discussing it.
Unless, unless there's great disagreement with that.
I'm fine, I think that, that it warrants certainly a discussion. I read Andrea's report. I was the one that learned that we didn't use, I'm digressing a moment, when we talked about the alarm process, I learned that we don't really use that alarm information for anything, and it didn't make any sense to continue that. It certainly, you know, was an action in futility, and it just simply used staff time. But I think, I read your, your pet report, and I did learn some things about that, that I think it, it warrants having that discussion, and sure, I think that that's a good idea. We can talk about that.
Yeah, you won't change my mind, but we can talk about it.
Okay. And the one thing, pet, like, one thing about pet licensing, it doesn't change the fact that people still have to vaccinate their pets. That does not change that at all.
You can't do anything anymore without vaccinating your pets. I mean, you can't go to the dog park without vaccinating. I mean, it just, it, it, I'm not sure that the policy outcome is what it was 40, 50 years ago when we did that.
We'll put it on, and we can talk further about it.
All right, very good. Thank you. That's all I have.
Anything else? Okay, Councilmember Juneman?
Okay, this is the last time, because it's the end of January. There is still a box out in our lobby for recycle your holiday lights, and the reason that box is basically empty now is because it was heaped up about two weeks ago again. So if somehow you set a set on a shelf in your garage, or down in your basement, or whatever to get rid of, please don't trash them, bring them here for recycling. They are torn apart, and every piece that can be recycled is recycled. So this is your last chance, because the end of January is it. So I thought I better be consistent.
Thank you.
And secondly, we had information in our FYI this week that through Ramsey County Metro Livable Communities Act grant was given to redevelopment of Emma's Place across the street, and since it's a Maplewood asset, I thought we should be noticing and be happy we got a grant to help with fixing it up.
I think the grant was like 180-some thousand?
Hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars, yes.
Which is really good, because I know that they need some work in there.
Yep.
And I think that's great to help out our families over there.
Yes.
One other thing I wanted to ask about the Christmas tree recycling, I happen to be in another city, and they were doing the Christmas tree recycling as well, but they also accepted computer cords and all sorts of different cords that, and it was right on their sign and in their box. You know, I know I've got a box of cords at home, and I remember thinking, we should maybe, I don't know if they, if the same company does that?
Maybe, we can look into it.
Yeah.
I don't know.
Maybe for next year, we can look into that, because if I'm like anybody else out there, there's a whole lot of cords from old computers years ago that you just didn't get rid of, and I don't know why, but I...
There they are.
Yeah, there they are. So if we can look at that for next year, because it was right in the same box, they were all mixed together, and it was their sign, I thought that was a good thing, if we can recycle something more. I know Councilmember Juneman would be very happy about that.
Mayor, if we're not able to do that in time for your box of cords, I do believe that Best Buy will, will take those in their recycling.
Oh, will they? Okay, well, that's a good thing, too.
Electronics recycling there, and I think the only thing you have to pay for are televisions.
Okay.
Like video screens, everything else is free.
Thank you for that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, Councilmember Smith, you're next.
Whoops, wrong button. Thank you. I just wanted to thank Public Works again. We had a little snow last night, and my son had a snow day today, so I was working from home and hanging out, and he and I went out for breakfast, and we were having breakfast in downtown St. Paul on East 7th Street at about 10:30, and I was watching the plows go by from St. Paul at 10:30 in the morning on a major thoroughfare in downtown St. Paul, and I said to my son, you know, we were done plowing probably about four or five hours ago, and they're still plowing their major streets over here. So, you know, I think we take that for granted. I woke up this morning, my street was plowed. It's such an incredible service, and they do such a great job, and I just want to say thank you.
Yeah.
It makes our job easy, too.
Councilmember Juneman?
That reminds me, I was going to sneak this into his presentation, because I was going to say something, and I forgot, feeble-minded. If you have a, a fire hydrant on your corner in your yard, it's actually time to shovel it out. Seems like by now, we shouldn't be talking about that, but this is the first time it's happened, and we shoveled ours out today, so. And when the fog was by, sometimes they kind of get buried, and how would you like to hop off that fire truck at 3:00 in the morning and end up in a snowdrift up to your hips? So if you have one, if you're lucky enough to have one in your yard or on your corner, please shovel it out.
Thank you. Good reminder for everyone. And I wanted to report on the North End Group that met last week. Mr. Martin was there with Perkins and Will, and we did the next step in the North End Study. That's the study that we're looking at, Maplewood Mall and that area around the mall, and what we can do to revision that for the next 20 years. And we had to do an exercise where we found photographs online, or, you know, took photographs, and then submitted them to the city's website in terms of what we envisioned that mall area and the surrounding area to look like. And then we got together as a group, we talked about that, and then we did an exercise, and we had big maps and two huge tables, and it was a little bit like being back in elementary school, and we all loved it. We got Legos. And we envisioned what that mall area would look like, putting on blocks representing residential areas and different buildings and different recreational spots and green space, and we got to move things around and really dream big. That's what I'm talking about in terms of that North End and what we can do and what we can plan ahead for, for that area. And so that was a really great exercise, I thought. It really got the creative juices going, and a lot of people thinking about what really we could do to reinvent our Maplewood Mall, because, you know, we've said it before, we talked about it, we've talked about it up here at the DS, I talked about it at the State of the City address, that retail has changed, and we need to think about what we can do in terms of that mall and the future of that mall. So it was a very fun exercise, I thought. Mr. Martin and Perkins and Will did a great job kind of leading us through that and helping us think about the mall in different areas, the mall area, the whole North End area, not just the mall. So there's a lot of exciting things that are happening out there, and we want to make sure that we keep on kind of focusing on what that new vision might look like, so...
That was just an excuse to play with Legos.
And crayons.
It had been a while that, since I had used Legos and pipe cleaners, but it really was, I thought it was a very effective exercise, and got people thinking and talking about how do they see that purpose, and Mr. Love was there, too. So how do we see that, that mall area being used? So, very helpful. Okay, next we have the presentation of the 2018 Strategic Plan Year in Review. City Manager Coleman, do you want to tee that up?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. Tonight, we're going to hear a status report on the 2018 Strategic Plan and our specific key outcome indicators. And as you know, we purchased some software last year called Invisio, which allows us to present this in a very readable and understandable manner, which we also post on our webpage so our residents can see the progress we're making as well. Tonight, we have Lois Knudsen, who is our Performance Measurement Coordinator, and Mr. Funk, Assistant City Manager, to give you an update on that.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. I'm excited to report on the progress we've made on our strategic plan. In 2018, we made big changes to how we reported on and tracked our strategic plan. Prior to that, all the reporting was done on a big spreadsheet. It was laborious for the people doing the reporting, as well as very difficult for staff, council to look at and get anything out of, because it was just pages and pages of a spreadsheet. So in 2018, we made big changes by purchasing Invisio. Invisio is a program that helps us to manage our plan, both in the reporting and in the tracking of the different performance measures. When we moved the plan to Invisio, we started by asking each department to take a look at the City Council's six strategic priorities, and we tasked them with identifying key outcome indicators and action initiatives that their department could report on. Can I get the presentation? Okay. Okay, for our first year of the plan, I think we did pretty well. As you can see, it says we've made 85% progress on our goals. That's pretty good. This year was a time to get used to regular reporting and to become familiar with using Invisio. It's a very easy product to use, it's, it's all online, but to get people to remember that they have to report, that they're responsible, and then there were a few quirks of how to work different things out. As we progressed through the year, we made a few modifications as we saw what was working and what wasn't. A few items were discontinued because we discovered that they really weren't relevant to our plan. In other instances, we modified some of the K OIs, Key Outcome Indicators, because we wanted to more accurately get to what our goal was. If you look at the graph, you can see that it shows that we are almost 60% complete on our initiatives, and then another 32% are on track. But you can also see that there are some disruptions. Some of those disruptions were, the Farrell Ferndale Project was not completed due to delays caused by XL Energy and weather conditions. There was a K O I in regard to reducing repeat utilization of the EMS system, and there was some interruption to that, because towards the end of the year, the Fire and EMS Department took a step back and worked on their own strategic plan, so that they're going to kind of reconfigure how they want to address that issue. There was also disruption in securing some of the purchase agreements, that was one of our goals in the Gladstone area. I believe the target was 75%, and we didn't reach that, but that's one of those things you can't control. People are going to sell you the property when they're ready to, so again, one of those issues you can't really control. On our, our priority of community inclusiveness, you heard a bit about that earlier this evening from the Moore team, but this year, in 2018, the Police Department had a goal of spending volunteer outreach hours in the community, and their goal was 500 hours. And as you can see, they doubled that. They spent over 1,000 hours at community outreach events this year. Park and Rec Department had a goal of adding two events to the number that they had in 2017. In 2017, they had 16 events, and in 2018, they had 21. So instead of increasing it by two, they actually increased it by five. So again, that was great. To this point, most of our community inclusiveness efforts have been specific to department, as the Moore team discussed earlier. The Police Department has events, the Fire Department had events, and Park and Rec has events. We are making an effort to coordinate all of our event planning among all the departments. We're trying to get away from the siloing and get more collaboration, and this is being facilitated by the Moore team. Financial sustainability. Our Finance Department once again continues to excel and receive awards. The city currently has a double A-plus bond rating with S&amp;P. We received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Presentation Award for 2018, and we also received the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting for 2017. As we move into 2019, we plan to track and report on initial, additional initiatives that address our financial policies and our debt reduction policy. Another way we can be financially sustainable is to build, maintain, and manage our capital assets and infrastructure. Our crews were kept very busy in 2018. 65.2 miles of sanitary sewer mains were cleaned, which is a third of the city, and that was what our goal was. 3.6 miles of roads were reconstruction, reconstructed or rehabilitated, and that, that's how much was completed. We have another .4 miles left to finish in the spring because of some interruptions, but the goal was 3.5 miles, so we've already exceeded the goal. So we've already exceeded the goal. And then one of our other assets that we take care of are our preserves and open space areas. And one of our key outcomes is to maintain and work on at least eight of them every year. And one of the things that was done this year was city staff assisted with the shoreline planning outside along the pond next to City Hall. Other infrastructure and assets we're planning to add to report on in our 2019 plan include storm sewer, parks, city buildings, and even our street signs. Integrated communication is a huge priority for the city. Considering that two-thirds of our communication staff have been with the city for less than a year and a half, they made incredible strides in 2018. Our communication staff produced over 75 videos in 2018. And if you have a chance, check out the city on YouTube because most of them are there for you to look at and they've done some great work. They also worked with the Nature Center, collaborating on three different environmental videos. And again, those are really fun to look at if you have a chance. We also can't forget about the Maplewood Living, which according to our citizen survey is the top way residents get their news about the city. Our communications team also has been working diligently with staff on social media posts and keeping that updated and the city's webpage. We're doing a whole new reboot of the webpage, I believe, towards the end of the year. Maplewood values organizational efficiencies, which are based on performance measurement, accountability, and best practices. In the strategic plan, we refer to this as operational effectiveness. In short, it's customer service. What, what can we do to make things better for the residents of Maplewood? We've been tracking 17 different key outcomes, but a few of the highlights are the response time to all emergency incidents. This is by the Fire and EMS Department. It was 8.3 minutes or less for 90% of the incidents. The goal was actually to do it in eight minutes or less, so that's something that we need to continue to work on. But as the Fire and EMS Department are working on their own strategic plan, they're tuning in on that and figuring out how they can get even better in the response time. Great example of today, plow all city roads to full width within eight hours after snow has stopped falling for 90% of all average snow events. Our crews do an incredible job at this. 76% of staff are participating in the wellness program. This is up 2% from 2017 and that's what our goal was. Now, you may wonder how that, what that has to do with operational effectiveness, but because of our wellness program, our insurance rate, premium rates did not go up this year. So I, we have a pretty active staff and they're concerned about their wellness and it is making a difference. T-ball participation is up 17.9% from the previous year. That's one of those things that we're not sure if we're going to continue to track it, but it was one of the measures we set out when we set up this plan initially for 2018 and they made great progress. As we move into 2019, we are determining which of these key outcomes are truly tied to operational effectiveness and which are simply measures. So that's something else we're working on fine tuning. As a first string suburb with little to no undeveloped parcels, we focus heavily on redevelopment. For many years, the Gladstone neighborhood was, has been the city's primary redevelopment priority. Progress is being made there. In 2018, staff secured purchase agreements for three properties. It wasn't what our goal was, but we are slowly making progress. Staff is working with Perkins and Will on the North End study. The North End has recently been identified as an economic hub that is important to the overall health of the city and the region. So we are trying to do the planning necessary for this area to stay vibrant in the future. And then the draft 2040 comp plan was completed and submitted to the Met Council review, for review. Many, many hours of staff time, as well as time from city council commissioners and even residents was spent in working on that comp plan. So that's a huge accomplishment. Okay, during our first year, we learned some lessons. The first year went well. In fact, the Vice President of Customer Success at Invisio recently reached out to Mike and I and they want to use Maplewood as a case study. And we said, "Thank you, but we're not quite ready yet." We don't feel like our product is good enough to use as a case study. So, we know we can make a good thing even better by using the tool more effectively and efficiently to report on our strategic plan and tell our story. So a major overhaul is currently underway. We've already spent several hours meeting with staff. We started at the top. We have the strategic priorities, so we met with the department heads and together as a team, instead of siloing it by departments. And we looked at our current plan and we are coming up with new key outcomes, new performance measures, and then under that, new action initiatives. And the other thing we're trying to do is get multiple levels of staff involved. So last week, we had our first meeting with the Park and Rec staff and we had some of the crew members with us. So we talked about the, you know, the different priorities and got their input on how we can make this plan better. And we feel that if we can get them more informed about it, they'll know about the plan, they'll have more buy-in to the plan, and they will see that the plan, the strategic plan, is what guides our day-to-day work in almost all areas of the, of the work we do here at the city. We also decided that reporting should be targeted on measurable outcomes. If you see the report we put together, it's like 26 pages long. It's a lot of words. We want to get away from that and we want to get to a report that is numbers, that's charts and graphs, so you can look at it and you can see the progress that's being made. We have a few of those now, but the new report will be almost completely charts and graphs. And we want to focus more on strategic planning rather than goal setting. We want to make sure that what we're measuring truly does tie to the strategic plan, instead of just measuring something to measure it because it's easy, because it's something you track anyway. So we're trying to really make some changes to make the plan better. I'm looking forward to coming back in about a month or so to give you an update on the 2019 plan. We're working hard on it. We have a lot more work to do, but we're making progress and I think it will be something that we truly can be proud of when they make us a case study. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Lois, Ms. Knudsen. That was a very good report. I have to say that this was a really big undertaking and I think that we have come a long way. I'm really proud of the way that our city is transparent and that we're focused on measuring what is it that we do. And I, I like some of the ideas that you're looking at and, and taking what you learned from this past year and bringing that forward. A couple of suggestions that I have, I'd like to see, you know, in a month, are you going to be bringing back to us what your, are you going to bring back the, the K O Is or are you going to bring back, what is it that you're, I should ask you, what is it that you're going to bring back to us?
Well, what we're doing is we're changing the structure of the plan a little bit. Right now, we have the K O Is and then there's the action initiatives under it. As you saw in the Moore team's plan, we're going to add another, sort of add another level. We have key outcomes, which are more statements, and then under each of those, we have performance measures.
Okay.
And then under those, we have action initiatives. But what we will be bringing to you are the key outcomes and the performance measures.
Okay. Because from a council perspective, I think it would be very helpful to know really what those key outcome indicators are so that we can see those and see what it is that we're moving towards this year. For example, I know under financial sustainability, when we did this staff and council retreat two years ago and came up with our strategic priorities, one of the things that we talked about and that this council has discussed numerous times is debt reduction. And so I'd like to see that measured so that that's reported back to us as to how we're doing with that.
And that is definitely something we'll be adding.
Good. And I would also like to see some explanation. We are going to have disruptions and we're going to have major disruptions. You know, that was clear. It wasn't clear from this report that, you know, some of the, the Ferndale project was delayed because of weather. I mean, we kind of, we knew that because we were on the council, but it wasn't reported like that. So I'd like to see those spelled out because they're going to be expected, that happens, you know? The question then is what do we do about it when we do have those disruptions or those major disruptions? But I think this is a very good report and I really appreciate your team's work on this and, and Mr. Funk, your work on this because it is making what we do measurable so that we can really see that we're accomplishing the goals. You know, I remember back to that staff retreat and talking about the fact that if you don't have a roadmap, you don't know where you're going and you're not going to get there. And so this really is the roadmap for our city and I like the, the commitment that you have to strategically work on that and make that even better. So thank you. Councilmember Smith, do you have a comment?
I do. Thank you. And I would agree with Mayor that it has been really cool to see this evolve. And I have to say, too, it's been really cool to see you evolve into this role, too.
Thank you.
This has been, I mean, you clearly have a lot of passion and, and have steered a very complex thing through some choppy waters and I think that's pretty cool. I'm going to say something that probably contradicts most of the other things I've said in these meetings, which, you know, I tend to be the one that goes to, let's have metrics, let's have measurability, let's talk about those things, which I still think is very important. I think I reacted a little bit to going forward, you know, everything will be charts and graphs. And I think that's important. However, I also think, to the Mayor's point, the story is important as well and understanding the narrative of what is happening within each of these initiatives and sometimes that is immeasurable.
Yes.
And sometimes it is not possible to put in numbers, but it doesn't mean it's not important. So I would encourage you to think both quantitative and qualitatively as you're evaluating things to make sure you're telling the full story.
Thank you.
Because really, at the end of the day, all this is, is telling us the story of how things are going. You know, it's, you're not, you know, we believe you whether it's a number or a statement.
Thank you.
Yeah. The number, yeah, the number helps us put it in context, but so does the statement. So just, this is something I've been thinking about a lot lately. My day job is like, how do we tell a story?
Yep.
And for some people, you need a lot more numbers to tell the story. For some people, that's just distracting. So I think, you know, what, what I told someone on my team the other day was, go show this to someone who has no idea what you're talking about and see if they can follow it.
Exactly.
Because, because he was like, "Well, our VP loved it." And I'm like, "I'm sure he did, but he's been, he's been steeped in this stuff for..."
Years.
Yeah, like, he can fill, he just automatically fills in the gaps. But for, you know, for us and for residents, I think sometimes we don't do this all day long, so.
Can I just have a quick response?
I think that's a little bit where we're going with it, so, thank you.
Thank you for your input. City Manager Coleman, did you want to make a comment?
I just wanted to make a quick comment. I really appreciate Councilmember Smith's comments as we've sat in the meetings and really struggled with what I would equate to kind of value statements. And we're arguing about how we can't have that because we don't know how to measure it. And it's really something important, but we're going, "No, no, we can't, how do you measure that? We can't do it." So I really appreciate that because it, it kind of gives us the opportunity to do some quality statements and know that we're okay if we don't have a performance measure for it. So I really appreciate that comment.
Yeah, I mean, how do you measure racial equity? I mean, there are some indicating metrics.
Correct.
But you can't measure the outcome.
There's a story.
Really appreciate that.
I think that's a very good comment.
Thank you.
Councilmember Juneman.
What he said. I happen to be a person who doesn't like charts and graphs. I detested math all the way through school. When I would get the reports as a teacher with all the charts and graphs, I'd go through it as fast as I could, get to the end where they gave the statements of what actually had gone on. So yeah, don't totally do away with the story like they're talking about because some of that has validity without having a number in it because it tells you something. It just doesn't have the, I hate this word, metric to support it.
Thank you for your input. Assistant City Manager Funk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and Council. Again, just want to take a second to thank Ms. Knudsen on her efforts. I know you've already done that and from a staff's perspective, Ms. Knudsen has really helped our staff with this project. It's, it's been a key project, as you've already alluded to, and just thank her for meeting with departments. It's taken a lot of time. I can underscore the amount of meetings we've had and the hours we spent talking to other department heads. And it's about collaboration and engagement. We've wanted from the very beginning to make sure this plan was not just a top-down type plan, that it also is from bottom up. And so we are engaging our staff from all levels and that's really certainly making sure that the, the plan comes to life internally because you need to make it purposeful. And I think our staff is starting to see the purpose behind what we're doing and the meaning behind our strategic plan. And the last thing I would say is I value your comments on charts and graphs and words. I think the, the main thing is that we want to find a good balance between telling the story. We would say it's almost too word-heavy today because it's 26 pages of literature. And so we also want to make sure that we have measurables and that's what I think this whole effort has been is, is how do we, how do we tell a story using metrics? Because you have to measure some sort of success by progress, progress beyond, beyond words. And so I think there's a balance between setting some performance measures, measuring that, and then able to put some words behind whether it's just disruptions or a good story to tell or some of the challenges that have been had by, by trying to accomplish something. So we're going to continue to achieve that and we appreciate your support as we really build the strategic plan into something meaningful. I've been in government for 22 years, worked in four cities and I think many of us on our senior management team, staff with their experience and with strategic planning. Strategic planning tends to be something as a buzzword, it's like we do it. You often hear cities do strategic plans. We're doing strategic plans and strategic planning is beyond just setting goals and it's putting performance measures, it's accountability, and then being able to demonstrate that. So we're, we're achieving that.
And it's really the culture of our workplace here so that people know what it is that we're doing, so.
So, thank you.
Excellent job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, we are moving on to the consent agenda. Pardon me? Is there a motion on the consent agenda or is, would anyone like to make any comments about the consent agenda? Councilmember Juneman.
I'd like to ask a question on G5.
G5? Okay, let's go to that. Mr. Martin, G5. Councilmember Juneman, what's your question?
Actually, I have two. Are the... Can we verify the hours of operation for this potential place, please?
Mayor and Council, the hours of operation are also dictated by state statute, which limits when auto sales could occur. The applicant is here if they want to speak to what their stated hours could be.
So it says Monday through Saturday between 9:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. Is that accurate?
Yes, that's correct.
Thank you. And then I would like to find out if they are aware of and have decided to abide by the police chief's wise advice about, because we have a high rate of auto theft in Maplewood, so he's trying to help them ahead of the game, shall we say. So I'm wondering if they have acknowledged this and if they intend to do that.
Mayor and Council, yes, that item specifically, the condition of approval that's included with the resolution was discussed at the Planning Commission meeting and the applicant did acknowledge it and will work with the Police Department on coming up with a safety plan.
And I think it's, one of the reasons I brought this up is I think the public should be aware of the fact that our Police Department has an officer who is certified in crime prevention through environmental design. That means before the car is gone, figure out how to take care of the place so the car doesn't disappear. How efficient, hmm. Okay, those are my only questions. Thank you.
Okay.
I move consent agenda items G1 through 6.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Councilmember Smith. Consent agenda items 1 through 6. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All in favor? Okay, moving on. There are no public hearings and no unfinished business. Next, we are on to new business. Let's see, our first agenda item has to do with food and food handlers and amending our ordinance. Do you want to tee this up for us?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. Our Minnesota Food Code has not been updated in its entirety for 20 years. So our staff person, our health officer, Molly Wellens, has made some suggested changes to be in compliance with the Minnesota Food Code. And part of this has to do with just the new things that are happening out in our community. community, like food trucks and breweries and different things, raw fish, now people like that. And so there's been a lot of changes. So Ms. Wellens has prepared some ordinance amendments for you. They're in your packet and you can see the redline version versus the new language. And with that, Mayor, I'd ask that you call on Ms. Wellens to give the report.
Ms. Wellens, could you give us the report?
Good evening, Mayor and City Manager Coleman and councilmembers. So the city of Maplewood is one of many jurisdictions in the state of Minnesota that has a delegation agreement with the Minnesota Department of Health to provide consistent public health protection through the licensure and inspection of food establishments as well as pools and lodging. The delegation agreement requires that jurisdictions adopt the same Minnesota rules 4626 to ensure a consistent statewide system. And as City Manager Coleman indicated, the Minnesota food code that we follow has not been adopted or updated in about 20 years. In that time, many things have changed. Individuals are now eating raw animal products such as sushi. We're visiting food trucks and breweries and food allergies and sensitivities are now much more commonplace. The changes to the food code continues to focus on behaviors that are critical to preventing foodborne illness such as employee knowledge, employee illness, and hand washing, yet they become less stringent in other areas after 20 years of scientific research. Some of the changes to the food code include not requiring a fingernail brush at the hand sink because it's been proven that they grow bacteria, so it's, you know, counterproductive. But instead, we're now posting, requiring postings at the hand sinks to require and remind employees to consistently and continually wash their hands through their shifts. Other, other changes include reducing the cook temperatures from 140 degrees down to 135 degrees to further provide higher quality of food, eliminating bare hand contact with ready-to-eat foods. The current food code or the previous food code said bare hand contact shall be limited, whereas now the new food code says that bare hand contact is not allowed at all. There's a requirement that mushrooms come from an approved source and hand dryers are now allowed at hand sinks in the kitchen. And those are just some of the top main priority changes to the current food code that is going into effect. So in conclusion, I'm just requesting that you approve the motion to adopt the ordinance that amends Chapter 14 in the Minnesota food code for our city code. And by adopting that, we will remain in compliance with our delegation agreement with the state Minnesota Department of Health.
Okay. Councilmember Juneman has a question and then I think Councilmember Smith does too.
Actually, I have a comment. I think that most people probably don't even think about this, her job position and what it involves, for one thing. And I want everybody in Maplewood to know you're better off than almost anywhere else because most of the rest of the metropolitan area is now relying on either the state or the county. So don't eat in Roseville, eat here. And because we have someone who has our, I could say other suburbs if you'd like me to, Brian, but I have more friends in Roseville, so I like to pick on them. But it is an important thing that we have our own food inspection because when you're, with the county, it only happens once every two or three years. And all I can say is she keeps us all happy and alive. We know we can go there and probably come out alive and have a good dinner. So we thank her. And just look at this, the fact that there are 20 major changes. That's a lot to keep track of.
Yeah.
And I have to say, you haven't really lived totally unless you followed her around to an inspection. I often have referred to her in the past as Hitler's sister.
Ooh.
Well, look at her. She's this innocent-looking, sweet-faced, you know, she's a nice lady, but do what you're supposed to do.
Okay.
Because beneath that lovely surface, there's the lady who says, "Ahem!" And that you won't be open for the next few days unless you do what I asked, which is to all of our benefit. So thank you for your work, Molly.
Thank you.
Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I just, I know you said this, but I just want to be crystal clear on it. We're just getting into, be consistent with the state code here, correct?
Correct, yep.
This is not separate rules or anything.
It's not separate. It's not that the city of Maplewood would have our own food code. We are just adopting the Minnesota food code that they have already amended and updated. So we're now consistent if we adopt this.
Make sure you're putting a fine point on that, so thank you.
Yeah, we're not being more stringent or less stringent.
But we have our own enforcer.
No, I know. I'm glad we do. I just, I want to make sure we're not making a mistake.
We are not. Ms. Wellens, I have a question. Thank you, by the way, for what you do because I know that it is a very unique thing that we offer in our city. How is it that restaurant owners and food truck owners are going to learn about these? I'm trying to remember, I read this and they go into effect March 1st, so there isn't a whole lot of time. So how do all of the restaurants in Maplewood know that these things are coming?
Multiple emails and hard copy informationals have gone out to all of the restaurant owners across the state through this whole process. So none of these changes are, that they, they're not just finding out about them now in the whole process of the last two to three years. They've been asked for comments and feedback and they've provided different comments and feedback as to what they think about the proposed changes. And then when they gave like the six-month window that they were coming, they were all provided more information and emails have gone out, like I said, mailings through the United States Postal System have gone out, phone calls have gone out, and with their license renewal packets, more information will also go out.
So no one is going to be able to say, we didn't know that this was coming?
Absolutely not.
Okay, perfect.
On my inspections for like the last two to three years, as different things have come up, I've said with the new food code, you can anticipate XYZ. So some of our places have been thinking about getting new equipment and one of the changes is that the equipment standards will be less stringent. And so I've said if you wait for the new food code, you wouldn't need to buy a commercial piece of equipment, so maybe wait until March 1st when the new food code goes into effect.
That's very helpful for our business owners, so thank you very much. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I move approval of the ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 6, Food and Food Handlers.
Do you have a second? Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith concerning the ordinance amending Chapter 14, Article 6, Food and Food Handlers. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Have a good night. Stay warm.
Thanks. Okay, the next agenda item is the 2019-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreements with MCSA. And, oh, intro. Do you want to do an intro? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. Tonight, we are asking council to approve the 2019 and 2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the city of Maplewood and the Maplewood Confidential and Supervisory Group and authorize the mayor and the city manager to execute the said contract on behalf of the city. Just to provide a little bit of background, we met, Mr. Funk and myself met with council back in August to kind of set some parameters for where we were in terms of budget and some of the strategies that we would need going into negotiations. In December, we touched base with you again to consider strategies and to review some of the offers and where we're at with the seven bargaining unions that we have in Maplewood. Thus far, we have settled with three, two, tonight would be three. And we, we're really happy of where we're at with that one. Mr. Funk can go through the specifics of that, but I would just note for the council that back when we met in December and August, you kind of shaped the values that we use that, to use in our negotiations and the parameters after speaking with you. And Mr. Funk can tell you where we land with this contract, but I will say that the redline contract is included in your packet. There aren't very many changes. And so with that, Mayor, I'd ask that Mr. Funk go through the specifics of the contract.
Mr. Funk?
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. Thank you for the introduction, City Manager Coleman. Ms. Coleman provided a good thorough summary of the issue in front of you this evening. I don't have a lot to add to what has already been stated, but really talk about a couple things. So just, just for clarity purposes, in December of 2018, so last month, or the only meeting you had in December, you as a city council approved two contracts. That was LES police sergeants as well as LES police officers. So those contracts have been approved. So two of the seven contracts have been approved. Tonight before you is the contract with MCSA. They are our third union that we're bringing forward with you. When we're all done here at the end, Madam Mayor and members of the council, I'd like to just talk to you real quick about MSA as well and then give you an update on the last two. So with MCSA in front of you, this is a two-year contract. The current contract was for the period of January 1st, 2017, through December 31st, 2018. So that contract has expired as of December 31st, 2018. That contract by law continues until there's a new contract in place. So here before you is another two-year contract. We're finding a two-year contract is consistent with LES contracts were approved in December and I foresee the other contracts coming before you also having that two-year provision. The only change is, as Ms. Coleman mentioned, there is a redline copy in your, a redline version in your council packet. Really, there are only three changes I'd like to point out to you because the negotiations are very straightforward with MCSA. One has to do with compensation and wages. That always tends to be the biggest discussion point with union contracts. Before you is a proposed change regarding the annual wage adjustment, 3% on January 1st, 2019, and then also 3% on January 1st, 2020. Again, that is consistent with LES's contracts in December. We have reached tentative agreement with MCSA. That's going to be coming before you, likely at the next meeting, also at the same general wage adjustment for both years. We anticipate that also being the case with AFSMI and we've also met with the fire, firefighters' union and they too are aware of this provision. So we are being consistent internally with this pattern of 3%. That is also consistent with the external marketplace, so that is before you this evening for consideration. The second piece with union contracts usually is, also has to do with health insurance. As stated earlier a couple times in other presentations this evening, we were fortunate in 2019 to have a 0% increase in health insurance. We can boast as an organization that with this year's increase of 0%, that is now the third year out of the last four, we've had a 0% increase in our health insurance. Last year is also zero in 2018. The year before that was 3% increase in 2017 and then in 2016 was also 0%. So we've been doing very well as an organization at our, managing our healthcare premium costs. And so with the contract, we propose no changes to 2019. And then for year two of the contract, 2020, we would have reopen our language. That's been consistent with our past year's contracts, that we have reopen our language in year two. We're not aware, obviously, we don't know what's going to happen with insurance premiums. Again, we've been very fortunate as an organization. We've met recently with our, with our healthcare consultants and we're trending very well in terms of our premiums paid versus costs. And so we feel very good about 2020, but again, that's really unknown at this time. So we recommend having a year two reopener. The last thing I'll mention in this contract is a delete, delete-all type of change. That is for Article 28 regarding tuition reimbursement. By deleting this language means that the city's educational reimbursement policy comes into play. Because how that works is in our personnel policy, we do have a provision regarding education reimbursement and that is however trumped by the current language in Article 28. This was actually a provision that we as, as management recommended occur. This was not a request by the union, so the city management, myself and Ms. Coleman, recommended the Article 28 be deleted for the union consideration and they have agreed to that. So those are the three main changes, or with insurance, not really a change, but those are the three changes you'll see redlined in the contract. There are a couple other minor reference changes that you'll notice if you page through the contract. There's, for example, one reference to the Police Civil Service Commission. In 2018, the Police Civil Service Commission no longer exists, so we needed to make a different reference change to Police Civil Service Commission. And there are a couple other small, small minor tweaks to, to the contract regarding that. Outside of that, that is the extent of what's being proposed in front of you, Mayor and Council. There is, in addition to the redline draft, a clean copy, so you can look at a second copy of the contract that's in its clean format, so you can see everything in its totality. With that, Madam Mayor and Council, I'd stand for any questions. Otherwise, as Manager Coleman alluded to, there is recommended action for you this evening to approve the 2019-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between the city of Maplewood and the MCSA and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute that contract.
Thank you, Mr. Funk. Can you, just for the people, because the council already knows, but can you just for purposes of those people watching, tell us what employees, what Maplewood employees are part of the Maplewood Confidential and Supervisory Group?
Oh, yes, thank you, Madam.
I think that'll help for a point of reference for those people watching.
Yeah, good question. And for a point of clarity, the members of the MCSA, again, another acronym that I've used this evening, is the Maplewood Confidential and Supervisory Group. That group consists of, I don't have the con, I guess I do have the contract in the council packet. Off, just off the cuff, there's roughly about 15 to 20 employees that are represented into that group. Mainly, they consist of department heads and upper-level management employees for the city.
Okay, thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Funk? Is there a motion?
I move to approve the 2019-2020 Collective Bargaining Agreements between the city of Maplewood and Maplewood Confidential and Supervisory Group.
Second?
Moved by Juneman and seconded by Smith to approve the 2019 and 2020 Collective Bargaining Agreement between MCSA and the city of Maplewood. And I take it that you meant to include and authorize the mayor and city manager to execute the contract?
That's given.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just chime in with one last thing. Thank you for your discussion and approval this evening. Just real quick update, we have been, Ms. Coleman and I have been also negotiating with all the other unions as, as noted. The MCSA bargaining unit, which is the Maplewood, that's the, I'll just use, I'll just say MSA, the MSA group, they have notified Ms. Coleman and I here as of late last week that they too have agreed to the tentative agreement. So that will be coming forward to you at the next council meeting. What you'll see in that agreement is virtually what you see here this evening. So it's going to be very identical to the compensation and wages that I talked about, the health insurance, and then the delete-all of Article 28 and then plus a couple small changes.
And which employees are in MSA?
So MSA would be, there's roughly 10 employees in MSA and they are, they are still supervisory type positions. So it consists of supervisory positions that are not in MCSA.
Okay. Thank you very much for that.
And what I plan to do, Madam Mayor and Council, if it's okay with you, I'll probably bring that forward in a consent item next week because they are the same, it's the same conversation, so I'll...
I think that's a good way to handle it.
Unless you feel otherwise, I'll put it in consent.
No, I think that that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to the next agenda item, it's the Gold Line Bus Rapid Transit Oriented Development Plan. City Manager Coleman, do you want to start that one?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the City Council. Tonight, we've asked our consultants on this project to walk us through some of the new developments in the work that is going on and to talk about how the plan is to increase ridership through improved walk and bike station access and transit-oriented development. And the plan is also meant as a policy guide for us implementing part of our 2040 comprehensive plan. So we've asked that the consultants give us kind of new information because we have heard from them before, but I know that there are several people here tonight that have helped us with this. And I think I'd ask you to call on Sean Finwell to tell us who they all are and to introduce them and give you a little bit of background.
Ms. Finwell, do you want to give us a staff report on this?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council, and City Manager Coleman. So tonight, we will be hearing from Crandall-Arambula. They are the consultants working on this project, the bus rapid transit oriented development for the Gold Line, as well as representatives from Washington County. So of course, as introduction, we know that the Gold Line is a planned nine-mile dedicated rapid transit way that will connect St. Paul, Maplewood, Landfall, Oakdale, and Woodbury, generally along I-94. And Maplewood will have one station and that will be located in front of the 3M campus. So here tonight to present is Don Arambula of Crandall and Arambula. So, welcome.
And I think...
Oh, and as well, Sarah Allen with Washington County. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, and Members of Council.
Thank you, welcome.
My name is Sarah Allen, and I work for Washington County. And I help manage this project on behalf of the county. And I just want to extend a really large thank you to city staff and to council for continued direction and feedback and input in putting this plan together. So this is a year and a half, almost two years of work, and we hope that you'll be very happy with this plan and can continue it forward as the project progresses. I just want to point out too that Mr. Mark Breezy is here from the Gold Line Project Office, and he can be a resource for us if we have questions about the BRT line itself. This project is focused on the station area and not the transit line or the buses themselves, but it was made possible by a federally competitively awarded grant that we received, and it's kind of icing on the cake for this transit project. So I'll turn it over to Mr. Arambula.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes. Thank you, Mayor, Council Members, and City Manager. And I'm just going to go through this very quickly.
Would you please start with your name?
Yes, Don Arambula from Crandall-Arambula. And I'm also joined by Jason Graff, who's the project coordinator and project manager, helps out with this project too. So if there's some questions, he can often answer those as well. So I'm going to go through this fairly quickly. I think any kind of discussion, we want to leave a bit of time on that. So let me move on with that. So there are three key pieces I want to talk to you tonight about the BRT project, bus rapid transit, and bus rapid transit oriented development. Lots of acronyms being thrown around. I heard those earlier. And so there is a plan, a document, that we've prepared for that. And then we're going to talk something I think is really important, to talk about the benefits. What's the bottom line once you do this? So a little short piece on that as well. So with that, let me just start rolling through the BRT project as an overview. So where are we in the process? You've got, the communities, the Washington County and Ramsey County and the five cities have been working on this for quite a while, for your transit corridor. But our project is going concurrently with the project engineering. And we're completing, about to complete our 22-month process. And so where are we right now? In terms of the bus rapid transit project, as you look at the graphics, it is at, in September, the preliminary engineering indicated this. So you see the pink line, that's a guideway where buses-only lane would travel. And then there are two bridges on each end going over McKnight and Century. And then there is a station that has been, platform has been located just south of the 3M headquarters. So what would that look like? Here's a artist's rendition that we prepared for that. This is looking towards the west. You see the guideway, the station platform, and really a key component that's illustrated here is something we call a corridor trail. It's a continuous bike and walking connection that links the station to those major roadways. So in terms of the bus rapid transit development project, here is what we're doing. So our charge, as Sarah mentioned, is not to design that yellow line and the dots, that's the guideway and the stations, but it's really to give you an idea of what happens around it. So you see the outer circle, that is a half-mile, that's our study area. And the inner circle is a quarter-mile, where 80% of most people who take transit, who walk up to the station, come from. So we have a special emphasis for that area. So in terms of what have we prepared for the Maplewood BRT OD plan, there are really five components of that, and I'll go through each one of these a little bit, but their assessment, whether the background information, what's the overall vision, what's the big picture, what's its intent? And then there are the nuts and bolts pieces, circulation and development. And then finally, what are the implementation recommendations? What do you do with that information? So generally, the intent of the BRT OD plans is really about the bus. How can we increase ridership on the bus? And there's three really primary ways we can do that. One is to enable people who are walking there to get there more safely and directly and conveniently. Same with bicycles. We want to think of not only the bicycles and the half-mile, but really actually even beyond that, because most people can ride to the station about a mile out in about five minutes. And finally, where the development opportunities present themselves, we want to make sure that we get the kind of uses that will support the transit system. So that's the three big things. So we don't start from scratch. There's a lot of good information that your community has really developed, and we've learned from that and incorporated. So you see a list of those things, whether it's comprehensive plan, or your CIP, or other planning documents. And the process has been complete, it's been robust, and it's been inclusive, and it's been systematic. So you see the four steps that we've gone through, that began way back in 2017 in May. So it seems like, it's just yesterday to us, but frankly, it's been quite a while, almost two years. And throughout this process, we've had engagement sessions with city staff on a regular basis with Sean and Michael, and others, and even Steve and others. And so we've also met, I believe, with council in this room three times as well. So this isn't the first time we've presented this. In terms of a bigger vision for the overall Gold Line corridor, I'll run through that pretty quickly. So three key elements that we want to be able to do. So this is only about bus. We want to think about it being a multimodal corridor, so it's walking and biking. We want to make sure that any development or station area reaches its development potential. And the bottom line, as mentioned before, is to increase bus ridership. So when we think about routes to the station within that half-mile in particular, not all routes are the same, and nor should they be. So we've identified a hierarchy of station access routes, and you see four key, five, four key components of that. And starting out with that, we developed a corridor map that identifies the key element of that, which is called a corridor trail. So you can see that's that green line that generally runs parallel to the bus rapid transit guideway, but in some instances, because of space considerations and other concerns, in St. Paul in particular, it veers a little bit off of that. It still links the entire corridor. Also, when we start looking at landings, is we don't do a cookie-cutter approach. So we established some criteria that we call ideal bus transit-oriented development. But from that, we've found that certain stations can have different emphasis. And some of those emphasis or typologies, as we call them, are listed here. And so there's detail of how they can best meet the overall intent of the entire corridor. And so we've then assigned those typologies to each of the stations. And at the Maplewood Station, it is an employment station, and that's pretty obvious when you got 12,000 employees at 3M. So this was a bit of a no-brainer. So with that information, the plan includes these considerations. So we identified some key issues with the community, and staff, and stakeholders. And you can see these are mostly way toward access. We often joke, when we started this project, was the old saw, you can't get there from here. And so really, that was really one of the key leading ideas here, is how can we connect this station to the larger community? And then finally, if there's some opportunities for development, we should try to capture that as well. So the opportunities we did find is that 3M is a, obviously, a key component, and the employees want to be part of this station. There are surveys and other elements that led us to believe that. Some of the proposals I'll talk to you about, that would be supported by them. So you see those there. In terms of circulation plan, I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. So the backbone, again, of the system is corridor trail. And it's on the north side of Hudson Boulevard, and it extends and connects to some key destinations, especially to the west where there's the Sunray Shopping Center. And it would look something like this. And this corridor trail will be largely built by the bus rapid transit project. But what we're suggesting is that there could be some enhancements added to this in terms of landscaping and lighting, maybe wayfinding and other elements that go beyond the scope of the bus rapid transit project. And so you see some of that characteristics that we think may be a berm to keep people from going through the 3M campus. Ornamental trees and other things like that would come along with it. There are some other key access routes we've identified. You see that double-stripe line? Now I'll go through each one of these one at a time. So the first one of those would be Conway at the north. As you all know, 3M is a private campus, and we do not anticipate having any routes going through the campus for the general public. So it's important to connect to your two edge arterial connecting routes on McKnight and Century, and Conway gives you that ability to do that. So it's fairly straightforward, it's filling in the gaps where the sidewalks aren't complete, and then also adding bike lanes. The other one, and probably the big idea here, is this access route that connects to the neighborhoods to the south, and also to Battle Creek Park. And so really, the key piece of this is that we can get a direct connection, and it can connect to that amenity and the neighborhood. So here, this is a vision of this. So I'm going to talk to you a little bit about implementation, but this isn't set in stone, what I'm going to show you. It is one artist's rendition is what it could be. But the idea generally with this idea, this concept is to extend the expression of nature that you find in Battle Creek Park, and continue it over the freeway and tie it into the station. So in a sense, this becomes a trailhead or a gateway into the Battle Creek Park. Because we've heard throughout the corridor, people would love to come and use that amenity. And so this is a visual reminder that you're at Battle Creek Park as you get off the bus. So what would that look like here, looking from the east towards the west? You see 3M in the background, and here's a blow above that. Again, being respectful of 3M's campus, suggesting maybe a berm to provide that separation. One of the other ideas that came out of this was that you wanted to make the freeway disappear, if you will. And so you need to have it wide enough and add some landscaping. So as you cross this, you essentially have what we'd describe a land bridge. And this isn't a unique idea. Many communities around the world have done this before. And so you can have an experience that has that nature connection, rather than feeling like you're going through a cage that you often see going over freeways. So this is a little bit different. So hopefully, you won't be too aware of the freeway. And here's another view of what that might look like. So it's pretty long, but we've run some numbers on it, and this, don't take this, don't write it down. I always say that, don't write this number down. But you know, when you think about it in terms of the bigger picture, yeah, it's a cost, and there may be ways of doing it for less, and it may cost more. But when we look at that, maybe that's reasonable for such an important connection. So to move forward with this, there's some really key things that need to be done for this. So this is a vision. You need to start a robust process, and we call that a feasibility study. So what that would do would be identify funding. You need to find some partners, and there are those are out there, Met Council, Ramsey County, maybe 3M. And then you need to do a design, you need to clean up the costs, and then you need to figure out what the next steps are. So that's a whole nother process that you need to come out with this, but I think it's pretty exciting that we're to this point where you can even have this discussion or something like that. Moving on towards development plan. So that was access, connections to the station. What can we do in terms of development? So you've done a lot of work with your comprehensive plan, your 2040 comprehensive plan. This really is intended to support that and reinforce it where we can. So you see these hatched areas, those areas that the plan identified for transit-oriented supportive development. And so what we'd like to see there is primarily commercial or housing, probably with more of an emphasis on housing. And then in the areas, in the southern neighborhoods, we'd like to initiate what we call a missing-middle housing study. And so that missing-middle housing study would identify opportunities at the desire of the homeowners. This wouldn't be a top-down requirement, but if somebody wanted to get, maybe there's an old vacant lot here and there to build townhomes, or if somebody wants to build an accessory unit, often called a granny flat, so that mom can stay with you as they age, you could add that. So it's incremental increases in housing. And I know some of the other cities in the region have talked to this and done some innovative things that are hitting the national press. So this is some way to incrementally get a little bit more housing into the neighborhood without fundamentally changing the character. So that's one thing we'd suggest, maybe that's an additional piece of study. So moving on to implementation. So circulation projects, we hit this a little bit, but we would like to see the bike lanes and the improvements, for example, on Century be included as your capital improvements plan. With the trail corridor enhancements could be part of a metropolitan regional funding solicitation, and also on your capital improvements plan, and then this feasibility study. So those are the key pieces of this. And from the development plan standpoint, that infill housing study is something that we'd like to see move forward as well. So let's talk about the bottom line on this, and this is what are the benefits. So what are the hidden things that most people don't think about? So we've looked at the entire corridor and said, if you were to do this, what are the potential household transportation savings? So we've run some estimated numbers, and what we believe is that people in the corridor have the opportunity to save up to 50% of their spending on annual, they'll have a 50% annual savings in fuel. And that translates to about $725 per household. So a typical family, rather than putting that money into your gas tank, can use it for food, clothing, maybe a nice weekend trip somewhere, but that's a substantial amount of money. And then with that, we've also calculated something that we call a green dividend. And so essentially, how does money not spend on transportation recirculate into your community? So with a multiplier of about three or so, check with Jason if I'm wrong about that. But that really then, as you don't spend money there, people in local businesses can see about $4 million a year recirculated annually within the community. So if I'm a small business owner, that likelihood that people will be spending money here rather than sending it off to a fuel company somewhere is really a huge benefit. And additionally, we can reduce vehicle miles traveled by about 25%. See, these are all estimates, but we think in other areas, we've seen these are pretty consistent with that. So that means less congestion, it means less greenhouse gas emissions and other things that come along with fewer vehicle miles traveled. So that's it. Went through that pretty much in a whirlwind, and I am open, along with everybody else, for questions or comments.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I had a question about the surveys of 3M employees that you referred to. Can you tell us a little bit more about that?
Yeah. So Jason, can you come on up here? Because he's really had more active involvement with that.
Thank you.
And we also had another consultant, and who helped us with that as well.
Thank you.
Yeah, we worked directly with 3M, and they gave us the opportunity of doing an internal survey, which they led. We developed a number of questions specifically about the crossing I-94, the bridge, the concept of the multi-use trail along the frontage, and then asked a number of questions about usage of the regional park, to see what type of feedback we would get. And overwhelmingly, 90-plus percent of people felt that there was a benefit to the trail along the frontage. And there was about the same number of people who would approve of, when they talked about bike, walk and bike improvements, the bridge came up as much as the trail did. So there was clearly a desire from that perspective to have that crossing over, not only a benefit from a worker who might want to go to the park, but clearly identifying that for the neighborhoods to the south, that would benefit them, giving them access to the station. So 675 return surveys were received from employees, which is pretty substantial.
It's a pretty substantial.
And so what we heard was extremely positive in terms of those walk and bike improvements and-
So let me ask you this, and you can say if you don't know the answer, okay?
Sure.
Would that translate, do you believe, into 3M being more amenable to partner on that bridge going across 94?
It's very good information for them internally to hear that from employees. I think it's better heard from them, maybe from us and others. But I would say, yeah, that's beginning to open the door that, you know, that's something that they need to consider in terms of what's valuable to their employees.
It's a beautiful park, and it's so close, but it isn't accessible- It's a beautiful park, and it's so close, but it isn't accessible, easily accessible. And this would seem to solve that issue, and the fact that 3M is noted for being such a, you know, a big employer of millennials, that it just seems like a natural partnership to me. Let's hope.
I like your thing.
Yeah. So hopefully, we've opened the discussion, and that's something that you and council members and others can carry forward with. That's a key implementation item to talk about. And we know in other areas where we've done transit projects, we've had willing corporate partners to do very similar types of bridges as this as well.
That's very nice to know.
So this is not a unique situation with a major employer with a bridge.
Your renditions were beautiful. I mean, it sounds, it looks very engaging, and yeah, it's a great vision for that area.
So when we look at this station, we think it's a signature station for the entire corridor. The visibility to the use, its access, and if nothing else, you're in a traffic jam, and you see people walking to the station and getting and passing you on the bus. Nothing wrong with that, huh? That's a vision, I think.
I think it's a great vision. Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Thank you, Mayor. I think getting partnership from 3M is the critical point of our role in this project. It's their land. It's their, you know, a large portion of the ridership coming in and out of that station will be their folks. And I think one of the challenges the team's been having is, while we've been having some very good conversations with 3M, we've been talking to folks in, largely in facilities and security, whose jobs are to not screw anything up, right? Their jobs are to be protective of the property and to be very conservative in the way that's approached. The problem is, the benefits of something like this really fall into other areas of HR and diversity and long-term strategy and parts of the business that those groups just don't really have a lot of motivation to be driven by. So, you know, I think where we can be helpful as a body and as a city government is trying to open up conversations in other parts of the organization. Because 3M, as you guys well know, is a huge organization that's, you know, has a relatively conservative culture and does not necessarily reward folks for taking risks. And there is an element of this that feels risky to folks, and it's easy to say no and hard to say yes. So this is going to be, I think, the most critical role for us as a council, is for us to start to try to create connections for the team to go in and have these conversations at a different level. So, for example, I've been reaching out to Ann, who spoke at our State of the City. I think she's somebody who could be a really great champion for us. But we have to get that conversation started with us, and then sort of bring the team in to have the more technical discussions. But it's not going to happen if we keep relying on staff to go in and talk to facilities and security. You know, it's just, it's just a non-starter. And I don't blame them, because I understand where they're coming from, and it's just not the right folks to be talking to yet. And it's hard to get those conversations to go to a higher level. So, I mean, I'm not even talking about the bridge. The bridge is, I think, also critical. But I'm talking about, like, getting a sidewalk to the station from the road. Like, these are very basic things that we're going to have trouble with. You know, connecting Lyons Park to the station and allowing people to walk through campus, that gives them hives right now. Like, you know, there's so many different things that I think a lot of folks might look at as basics of a station like this, that unless 3M is willing to partner with us and figure out some solutions, we're going to have a real challenge figuring out how to make this work. And what I would hate to see happen is this becomes the 3M station, not the Maplewood station. And right now, it feels a little more like the 3M station. Now that, contrasted with what's happening across the street at Sunray, there are some very exciting things that could be happening at Sunray. And I don't know if you guys have any of those pictures with you, but some of the ideas around transit-oriented development on that property are super exciting and would revolutionize that area, you know? And if we look at some of the properties along 94 there, you know, whether it's the Chevy dealership or some of the other things in there, you know, if they were ever interested in moving somewhere or whatever, that could be a really primary, but they got to be able to get across the highway. So one way or the other, step one, step two, step three, and step four are getting 3M on board.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I do believe there's a bit of urgency to do this, though. So I think it's one thing to say, take it and do it. But remember, the transit project's not going to be open until 2023. And there's going to be a lot of disruption in terms of construction. And it would be not great if you finished this transit corridor project, and then layered on top of that, you got another project for a bridge over the freeway. If there's a way that you could work quickly to figure out how to merge those constructions, so maybe that they're maybe not exactly at the same time, but there could be some efficiency or reduction in disruption if they could be tied together. Because I just know that people get a little tired of what happens when you start doing these things. So that's something just to think about. The other point I would say is that other communities have done that. And at some point, if anybody's interested in talking to other cities, we certainly could probably give you a contact or two, and maybe give you a strategy of some places where they've done that as well.
Thank you for those insights.
Sure.
Councilmember Juneman.
Thank you. This sort of piggybacks on what he was talking about. I was looking at the station access route, it was attachment two on page 261, and it's where it shows the circle.
Yeah.
Yes. And then it shows the sidewalk with the people walking into 3M. I noticed it stops, the rendition stops right there at that building. No, my question's going to be, so have they seen these renditions?
Oh, sure.
Okay. And have they said anything about the access from their property onto this trail?
Well, their access is, they want to have access for the employees, but they do want to discourage the general public. So that is how they work the campus today. It's a subtle enforcement, but it is something they do. But they have not asked for a gate, or a fence, or a wall, or anything like that. So those people, those little characters you see drawing, those are 3M employees.
My response to that is yet.
Yeah.
Because the properties to the north as well, like you said, from the Lyons Park area, those are people who would want to take advantage of transit. And I don't know what the magic is, but we need some. Because I guess one of my points to 3M often is, you are part of a community, and this community kind of built up around you. And the neighborhood I live in, which is about a mile north of that, we used to call it the 3M ghetto, because my dad was the only one that didn't work at 3M. And everybody cut through the Union Cemetery to get to work. But I think we have to approach them, that it's not just for them, on Brian's point. While they have 12,000 people, that's nice, that's good. They need those people to work there. Unlike some people, I'm not too worried about them picking up and running somewhere else. You don't pick up that much real estate. So I think we have to also, if you will, play on them a little to be good community members. Because a lot of the people that live in some of those houses up in Lyons Park and stuff, at least originally, they were all 3M employees. That's where they started. And so I think that the community grew with the company, and the company grew with the community. And I think we need to do a little bit of playing on that, that they have done very well. And yes, they're good at what they do, but they've been fortunate to be in a community that has grown as well.
Yeah.
And I think we somehow have to strike a note that it's not just all about them. It's all about all of us. And they have finally, I noticed on the news, no longer do they say 3M Center is located in St. Paul, Minnesota. They do say Maplewood, Minnesota, so obviously, somebody's pointed it out to them. But that's the point. We are a community, and this will be more benefit to them than anyone else. There's no doubt about it. But a lot of their employees do now live south, and that's why they want the bridge. But some of their employees who may help make them who they are live north, and will have properties to sell and all that type of thing. And so I think we need to try and get a little bit of community orientation into this conversation as well.
Yeah. I think we've heard some community members second that idea. But on 3M's defense, when I started talking about this, we talked about where the most people who walk to the station are. It's within a quarter mile. There are no neighborhoods within a quarter mile of the station. There are a lot of 3M employees. So it's really up to 3M to get their employees and have good routes to this station. I would also point out, most of the neighborhoods are not directly north through the middle of the 3M campus. They're on the shoulders. And so we've talked about, and there are existing, what we call collector trails, your existing trail systems on Century and on McKnight, which link to those neighborhoods. They need to be safer, more robust in terms of landscape and amenities. Intersections need to be thought about. But those would work pretty well for people who are coming by bicycle, which is probably more likely. And so we're concerned also about connecting bus routes and other things like that. So we second what you're saying, but I don't think we're in a point where we're saying there's no way for neighbors to the north to get to this station.
No, but what I'm saying is, as community members, it would be nice if they would help with the very things you're talking about, because that would benefit them too, then, to be keeping people off of their precious property. I mean, that's kind of my point. As a community, if we look at this from above at a little bit bigger perimeter, those things that you're talking about, to get people there would be to their benefit as well.
Yep, absolutely.
And maybe this might have to happen incrementally, because it certainly sounds like we need to roll up our sleeves and do it rather soon in terms of looking for partnerships in this bridge, so that that can be a focus at least initially.
Because that's an easy one, because those neighborhoods are within walking distance to the south. The barrier, you know, that knife edge is the freeway. And people, when you look at your underpasses at McKnight and Century, they're almost, you know, send an eight-year-old through there, no way, you know? And that's really the acid test. Is it safe for somebody who's eight or 80? And I'd probably say no, no matter what we do. So if we can get a safe, direct, and convenient route, that neighborhood is really the substantial area that will benefit.
Okay. Thank you very much. Councilmember Juneman.
One more comment about that. We don't want to focus totally on the neighborhoods to the south, however, for the very reason I said. Because I know there are people, I know people that live on Stillwater Road, that's a long way north, but they work at 3M, and they have for years tried to find a way to weave through our neighborhoods and not get clobbered going to work. And so I think we need, that's why I'm saying, get 3M into the community conversation, that they have people from there too as well. And just because there might not be 7,000 doesn't mean that it isn't significant, because there's a, I think there's a thing called community spirit that is important to them as well as to us. And I think we need to promote that. And I also know that there are people from way up, well, to Larpenter and beyond, who bike their way through. And so rather than bike to work, which is even further in the rain and snow and all those things for those very avid people, they would probably want to do this and pick this bus up and go downtown. I mean, we have to look at, I mean, the quarter mile's important, and the half mile's important, but the big perimeter is important if this is a long-term community asset. That's my point.
Yeah. Council, Juneman, you're speaking the right words. We appreciate that support. We agree with you completely on that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Then I'm looking for a motion. It's on page 173. Councilmember Juneman?
I move to approve the Gold Line Bus Rapid Transit Oriented Development Plan as presented.
Moved by Juneman, seconded by Smith. Motion to approve the Gold Line Bus Rapid Transit Oriented Development Plan. Any further discussion?
I just want to live long enough to see it really happen. I'm the oldest one here, so I can say that.
I don't know that we can do anything with that in our motion.
No.
But, oh, Councilmember Smith?
Thank you. I will just say, you know, as much as I was trying to put a fine point on things, I do believe that if we can connect the right folks at 3M with the team and the city, I think we have a really rich conversation to have. So I don't mean to sound doom and gloom about this. I just think it's really important that we get the right people at the table to have the right kind of conversation.
I didn't think you sounded like doom and gloom.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure. But I do believe, if we get the right folks together, I think this will work.
I think it was more strategic and more urgent. It wasn't doom and gloom, so.
Well, good. That was my intent, so.
If you want doom and gloom, come to me, I can do that.
All right.
Yeah, I know. Juneman's got that covered for us.
Yes, I do.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation tonight, gentlemen. Okay, the next item is the appeal of the sign permit denial, Maple Pond Homes. City Manager Coleman, do you want to start that out for us?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor Abrams, members of the city council. The applicant this evening is requesting an appeal of a sign permit denial from city staff for the Maple Pond Homes at 1854 BB Road. The city denied the sign permit in a letter dated January 7. In that denial letter, we gave the applicant three options as to how they could move forward. The first two options dealt with the applicant either revising the sign or applying for a comprehensive sign plan, which would allow the Community Design Review Board to consider approval of the sign as submitted. The third option is detailed by city ordinance, allows the applicant to appeal the denial to the city council. The applicant has chosen to move forward with the third option and is appealing staff's denial of the sign permit. Yeah, that's the short version. I could turn this over to Mr. Martin, but I think I've talked to everyone except Brian, or Councilmember Smith, about the specific situation we're in here. But I would just say, from a staff perspective, and from what feedback I have gotten from council members, bringing this to the council is not really the best way to resolve this. And it really isn't the intention for city council to have to try to usurp the process that's been put in place. And so with that, you can call on Mr. Martin for more specifics of the report. The report does a nice job of outlining what's happened. I will say that I think the new sign is very attractive. We're really happy that they have done that. But I think they got a little ahead of themselves here, and I don't know if it was trying to be a cost-cutting measure or what they did to not go through our advice and go through the Design Review Board. But we really don't think that appealing this to you is the best option. That's staff's recommendation is to deny the appeal of the sign permit.
Thank you very much. Mr. Martin, could you please speak on this and give the staff report? And what I'd like you to focus on is the history, the chronology of this, so that everyone can understand that, and those watching will understand what this issue is and why is it that a sign is coming to, what is really, I'll agree with City Manager Coleman, it's a very attractive sign, but why is that before us tonight? Can you give us that history?
Yes, Mayor and Council. A sign permit application was submitted to the city of Maplewood on November 29. Within a few days of receiving, that permit staff did notify the applicant that the sign did not meet the city requirements, and that, as Ms. Manager Coleman mentioned, there were three options laid out to the applicant, either revising the permit so that we could approve it, comprehensive sign plan, which allows flexibility, it's built into the code for specific properties like this that are 10 acres or larger, or PUDs, where we can work with the Community Design Review Board to look at flexibility and sign standards, or code does allow the applicant to appeal to the council, and that's why we're here tonight. What ended up after that initial conversation, after the permit was applied, we did spend several weeks kind of going back and forth with the applicant, going through definitions within the code, different interpretations on how we're perceiving it versus how the applicant is perceiving it. And I do want to mention, the applicant, Eric Stang, is here tonight if there's any questions for him directly. So we did spend that time, and ultimately, we knew from staff that we weren't moving the needle on the conversation, so we did deny the permit formally via the letter. And then that gave the applicant the official right to appeal tonight. So we actually turned it around to the next available council meeting after we did deny the permit formally. So that's why we're here tonight.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Martin, do you want to introduce the, I believe is the owner here?
Mayor and Council, it's the representative from the sign company, Eric Stang. So he's over, he's right here, so if you.
Oh, okay. Who would like to come forward and speak on this? Would you step forward to the microphone? Thank you. Thank you. Would you please introduce yourself? Welcome to the council meeting and introduce yourself.
Thank you very much. My name's Eric Stang, and I'm from the sign company.
What do you have to say?
Well, I guess the reason we decided to come this way is be, to take this route is because we just, we really feel, feel strongly that, I mean, most of the time, when your panel is separate from, completely separate from the rest of the sign, you take the measurement of that separate panel, just the lettering and the wording. I mean, it even says right in the code that that's, let me find it here. The code states where the sign is a separate panel or structure or other material forming a single display, the area of the message, display face shall constitute as the area of the sign. And that's, if you look at our drawings, it's just the letters on that separate panel. That's how we're interpreting it.
Okay.
I mean, we're not trying to be a pain in the butt or anything like that, but it's just turned in, I know they see it one way.
We didn't assume that.
We see it another way, and it kind of, I mean, the code, I mean, I think you told me and I, could be updated, and.
Mr. Martin.
It could be a little more clear, I guess, because.
Have we interpreted this sign ordinance on a consistent basis?
Yes, Mayor and Council, what we don't necessarily focus on is just the area of the letters or the message of a sign. We look at the entire structure, and I think it's been reasonable on our part to look at the entire sign as part of how they're advertising their development or their apartment building. And so it's not just the letters, it's all the colors come together. The color panels are not supporting the sign itself. The structure is being supported by two poles that have footings that go into the ground that are, you can't see it. So that's what supports, that what makes the sign goes up. So while, when Mr. Stang referenced the code, he didn't reference the next part that then talks about unless it's an integral part of the sign display. And we do feel that all the color panels on the sign are part of that display.
And have we been consistent in how we have applied that?
We have been consistent, yes.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. I think the question in my mind, and from what I'm hearing from others, is not necessarily the content of the sign, it's more about the process and the how we're going about this today. And I think, so my question to Mr. Martin is, can you talk a little bit about why we ask people to do comprehensive sign plans? And, you know, I'm, I'm all for process, as long as there's value in that process, as long as we're not making people follow a process just because that's how we've always done things. So if you could kind of give us an idea of, you know, why is it as an organization we see that, that sign plan as a, as a value to that process, and how does that add to things, and then versus just bringing it to us?
Sure. Mayor and Council, so the sign code is set up to have a kind of a rigid set of standards that you either meet or you don't meet. The city recognizes, over time, that adding a comprehensive sign plan helps allow unique situations. So campuses are one of those situations, like, we've talked a lot about 3M tonight, they have a comprehensive sign plan, because there's no way to capture all their sign needs within one single ordinance. So anytime there's a development of 10 acres or more, like we're talking about with Maple Pond Apartments, that's a unique situation, where, yeah, maybe the scale that's laid out within the ordinance doesn't make sense in a black and white issue, and that we need to take a closer look to see what is that appropriate scale for signage. Could be the size of signs, could be the number of signs. So there's, it's built in flexibility for unique properties without the city, throughout the city.
And, and real quick follow-up, if that's okay?
Sure.
Can you explain a little bit then the role of the Community Design Review Board in that process and why that's important?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor and Council. So the Community Design Review Board reviews all design issues within the city of Maplewood. So they look at site plan issues, design issues with buildings, exterior materials, colors, all those kind of items. And so the, they're the entity that's been tagged with the responsibility of reviewing all comprehensive sign plans, because really it gets down to, does the sign size and number of signs fit the individual property?
Excellent. I think from my perspective, they're, particularly the CDRB, who are folks who, many of them have design backgrounds and have a broader view of sort of the overall plan for the city as where we're trying to go aesthetically throughout the city, that's a step that's helpful to us. And frankly, as a council, we're not expert in that.
No.
We rely on them to be the experts in that and then often take their recommendations. My, my gut feeling is they'd probably be pretty positive on this.
That's what it sounds like.
Yeah. I just, I, I don't want to, I'm uncomfortable setting a precedent of circumventing them and not getting that input in the process. And, you know, I'm, I'm always leery to add steps for folks who are trying to do business in Maplewood, that's, you know, that's.
That makes sense. We've gone through variances before. We just did one in St. Paul, and we knew it was going to be fine. I'm not exactly sure why we took this route on this one, but I'm the one that ended up having to be here, so.
Yeah. I guess if there's a way for us to go through this without maybe financially penalizing the organization too much to go back through the process, I, I would be supportive. I, you know, I think if this were something that was happening over and over again, I might be more concerned about enforcing some of the financial sides of this as far as fines and penalties, but in this case, I think if we could work with them to go through that process, and, and I'd be supportive of that.
Councilmember Juneman?
I'm half wherever you are. I'm about process, and sometimes throughout my life, process has stung me in the behind, but it's still process, whether it goes my way or not. And we are very proud to have a Community Design Review Board with this, with the talent that they have. It's one of the things that makes us a very appealing community to look at in spite of our age. And I guess the, the key part of this report for me is, staff alerted the applicant that the proposed sign did not meet ordinance requirements, and then worked with the applicant over the next several weeks, this is from November, on how to move forward. Staff strongly suggested to the applicant multiple times that they should apply for a comprehensive sign plan, which would allow the Community Design Review Board to consider approval of a sign that exceeds ordinance maximums. Process, process, process. I wasn't around when the, I don't think I was, I've been here a long time, but I think this was written even before I was here, that then it should, you could come to us and appeal, because like what he just said is true. What we know about designing, you might be able to put in a thimble and put your elbow in after it. We have opinions, but we don't have the same expertise, and in my mind, the same abilities that either our staff or Community Design Review Board has. And I'm in no way incited to, to say, okay, well, it's okay the way it is, because I'm not.
I guess part of what we were thinking is if we just, I can't remember, because we talked to three, four different people, if we just remove the red, the burgundy stripe on the one side to kind of differentiate, differentiate the, something from it, then that would be okay. But that, that's so.
Right, you know, right.
Oh, okay.
You know, we aren't in a position tonight where we can make that kind of assessment. I would concur with my fellow council members that I'm about process. When I got on the council back in 2014, I was the liaison for the Community Design Review Board, and they were fabulously talented. It was amazing to me how much they knew about materials and their whole purpose, based on, you know, their knowledge and their experience, was helping the aesthetics and making sure that, that we were consistent with what we were doing all over the city. So I am not inclined to avoid that process. I respect them, I trust their judgment. And I think that, I mean, from my perspective, I'm, you know, inclined to deny the appeal and require you to go back to design review. Now, in terms of the financial hit, there is a fine. I also don't appreciate when, you know, you know, you knew from November that you weren't supposed to put it up, but you put it up anyway without a permit. And so I would, however, be in favor of not doubling that fine, and instead, just issuing the fine and requiring you to go back to the Community Design Review Board, because I believe that they probably would, would, would be okay with it, but that's the process, and they have to vet it, because they are experienced, and we are not, we all have different opinions. I think the only, we probably could agree that it's, it's a very nice sign, it's definitely an improvement from the sign that was there. But we have to look at this from a citywide perspective, and I certainly don't want to encourage people that they can somehow avoid our commissions and going through the process, because that puts us in really, I think, an untenable position, where we don't have the expertise and the experience, and I don't want to be overlooking what really staff is doing in terms of being consistent and enforcing our ordinances, and then looking at the recommendations from the commissions that we rely on so heavily to be able to do our job. So that would be my recommendation. Councilmember, I'm sorry, City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams. I just wanted to clarify, make sure that I understand what you just said. So if there is a motion to deny the appeal, it would be your recommendation to have them pay the sign permit fee and the fee to go before the design review board and not the penalty?
Yes, that would be my preference.
It was the fee and the fine.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. Would someone entertain, I would entertain a motion in that regard?
I move to deny the appeal of a sign permit denial for a sign proposed at 1854 BB Road North with the accoutrements that were just added.
Any further discussion?
Yes, but after we take the motion.
Okay.
So my next step, I believe I have the comprehensive.
We've already, there's a motion by the council and a second, and I'm asking for any other discussion of the council. Okay, then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. The motion is denied. Your appeal for your sign.
Talk to Mr. Martin.
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll refer you to Mr. Martin.
Okay, now I have just a little incidental.
All right.
That I discovered reading this today. On packet, page 288, this is for the entertainment of Brian more than anyone. You'll notice that there's J4, attachment four. Councilman Bergstrom introduced the following resolution and moved its adoption, that's my father in 1968. And one more weird one that just threw me over the edge when I was reading this, Fred Moore, who was the, apparently the landowner, we live in his house. It's like, okay, dee-dee-dee-dee-dee-dee-dee, that's enough of this.
Councilmember Juneman, thank you for that history lesson.
Historical perspective.
Yes.
Holy smoke.
Okay, the last item on the agenda is the professional service agreement for city consultant services. City Manager Coleman?
Thank you, Mayor Abrams, and members of the city council. This is, this has been something that Public Works Director Steve Love has been working on for a couple months to do a SOQ, to have professional service agreements for city consultants related to our public works, our engineering, community development department, and park and recreation. And this year, I would like to commend Mr. Love for the approach that he took to this. We interviewed 11 or 12 consulting firms. We, it was a long days in the interviews, but we really were impressed with the talent pool that we have out, out in the metro area. We interviewed several people, we came up with recommendations for, you'll see that on page 297 of your packet, for municipal engineering, transportation engineering, surface water and natural resources, park preserves and open spaces, community development, structural, architectural, and GIS. And one of the things that I appreciate the most about this approach was that we went, we're looking for people for specific strengths, instead of just having two or three consultants that we would go to, and then they would subcontract with other architects or engineers, whatever was needed. We have all of those people now in our pool. And I, I'm really proud of staff for taking that approach. This agreement's going to run for five years, and I really think that we have an impressive bench here. We really do. I would like to commend Mr. Love for putting this together, and I'm not sure there's much that he can add, but if you'd like to call on him, he can add a little bit of color to that. But I think it's a really great approach, and I appreciate the fact that we are doing this as a strength-based approach for our consultant pool.
Thank you. Mr. Love, do you want to add some color to that?
Mayor and Council, yeah, I'll just add a couple, a few words. I, I think the strength-based approach is exactly right. We're, we're looking at, you know, what, what is the best tool in our toolbox to apply to the solution, instead of having a, you know, one tool for everything. Certainly the firms that we interviewed were all very impressive. It was a hard decision, but it certainly lends us to some really interesting capabilities as far as you think about the north end study, and when we go, you know, if we move into implementation on things, being able to tap different firms such as like Perkins and Will with public engagement, different firms on engineering, different firms that specialize in water resources, but they really specialize in implementing in a way where it's built into the environment. So I, you know, I'm really happy about what we're bringing forward to you tonight, and there was a lot of help, certainly from staff in community development, including Mike Martin. We had a number of, our assistant city engineer, another one of our engineers, Jenny Gainer was on the pool, and Audra, and as well as Melinda joined us for the interviews. So it was a couple long days. I do, in retrospect, I probably wouldn't have scheduled so many on a Friday.
[laughing]
But we did get through it, and I think it turns out to be a really good option for us.
Okay. Councilmember Smith?
Thank you, Mayor. Kudos to you guys for doing this. I think as an organization, we have to continually review the vendors we work with, the strengths that we're getting to ensure we're getting the best value out of them. You know, it's, it's so easy, and I do this in my day job too, where you start working with folks, you develop a relationship, and it, and it feels difficult to change. And so having this kind of approach where you're putting metrics against it and really looking at it, I think it's, it's great. I'm, I'm just curious, are there firms on here we haven't done business with before, and were there firms we were doing business with that didn't make the cut?
Mayor and Council, in our, in our current pool, prior to this, we, we had S E H, Kimley Horn, and Bolton and Meek. So we do see some of that, we do see them, some of their roles have changed, some of them have been reduced. There is some value into, in some of the work that they have done in the past and their knowledge of our city, so we don't totally discount that. But we also recognize that we need options for new approaches, new talent, and different approaches that way. So we do have three that are, are still in the pool. We have a total pool of eight. So, you know, I would say we, you know, we've added five more, so that, you know, that shows you that we're bringing in a lot more talent. And again, you know, when we look at how we did this, we, we don't have one firm that covers everything. We, we have firms that are strategically placed where we feel that they're going to provide the best service for us in that area.
I move approval of the professional service agreements for city consultant services.
Second?
Let's all second it.
I'll at least second one. Moved by Councilmember Juneman to authorize the mayor and city manager to enter into professional service agreements for consultant services with the following eight consultants. Seconded by Abrams, all those in favor, or is there any other discussion?
Great job, you guys.
Yeah. One quick question. Under GIS, we only have one vendor. Is there a concern there with bids and competitiveness?
I can answer that, too.
Okay.
We chose, we are currently using Bolton and Meek, and we use them for the big studies and also sort of the programming side, that how it interfaces with our new softwares that we're buying. And so they're familiar with us, and they're right in town, and we have a really great relationship, and we didn't want to change that.
Okay. I would also like to say thank you for doing this. I think it gives us a deep bench of resources to go to, and we can be prepared, I mean, we, we are prepared, we've got someone in our pocket that is going to be available to us, depending on what project may come and what facet of the project. So I think that that's a great idea. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. We have come to the end of our agenda, my very first meeting. Thank you all. Thank you for staff, for, and council for helping me with this new rhythm, because believe me, this is very different than sitting over there. It's a whole different rhythm.